Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's Own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios, where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Y'all, you know, I only have one item that I'm gonna rant about, but before I get there, I don't know about anybody else, but will the adults in the room who believe in democracy and who believe in the rule of law and the people that really want to help citizens, please stand up? Will the real people that actually care about the citizens of the United States, please stand up? I mean, we're impeaching people without any evidence of crimes, high crimes and misdemeanors? We're just impeaching people? I don't even understand what's going on in Washington. It's not making any sense to me. Somebody needs to tell me what the heck is going on around here. All I see is a bunch of nonsensical people running around trying to bully people into doing what they want them to do, like, it'd be like 10 people, feeling like they could just hold everybody hostage, hold the whole country hostage. And I'm still trying to figure out how Speaker McCarthy can stand without a spine. I think he needs to go to Texas, because I know he's from California. I think he needs to go to Texas and find one of those pickup trucks with the things hanging on the back, because I think somebody stole his and put them on the back of their truck. I've never seen anyone, anybody so lily-livered in my whole life. Just, he's just getting pumped by people like Matt Gaetz, getting straight pumped. You know me, I like to stay in the borders, but that just kind of just, y'all, will the real people, please, stand up? I'm just, I'm tired of weak, weak, mediocre humans trying to run our country. I can't even say just mediocre men anymore. You know, ladies, how we always say, you know, mediocre men trying to mansplain us stuff to us, but they got Marjorie Taylor Greene. She's a clown, too. So it's just mediocre humans out here thinking they the greatest thing since sliced bread. They won't shut up, they keep talking, and they're not doing anything for the people. I just found out, one of my blood thinners, yeah, because I have to take blood thinners because of blood clots, is on President Biden's list of medications that can be negotiated. I'm so glad to hear that, because that medication, and I'm not eligible because I'm not on Medicare, but that medication is almost $500 a month for blood clots, so I don't die. He's actually do, look, there's bridges being fixed in America, and in Indiana, every bridge at the same time, apparently, in Indiana. We don't know how to space ours out, apparently, but road construction is getting done. We are building alliances all over the globe. We are, this administration is accomplishing things, and they want to impeach him? For what? Somebody, the next time any of you Democrats who happen to be listening and you happen to have a debate with a Republican, be it a formal one or an informal one, ask them, please, 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 ask them, what is their plan for the future? Because I haven't heard one. What is their plan for the future of America? How do they want to move us forward? Because it sounds like they don't want to do anything, but just collect their dollars and sit on their tails and pick nonsensical fights. We pay for this, y'all. We pay for this. And some of this, I'm gonna be real honest with y'all, is our fault. We don't show up to the polls like we're supposed to in May and in November. This is a citizen government, and if we don't show up to vote, actually, not voting is saying something. You don't care how we're governed. You don't care what happens to you. You want government to happen to you instead of you happening to government. You want policy to happen to you instead of you happening to policy. Think about that. Clowns are running the show. And there's some real clowns in Hamilton Southeastern School System. The Current reports, Hamilton Southeastern School Superintendent Dr. Yvonne Stokes has submitted her resignation, and the HSE Board of Trustees has scheduled a special meeting, they scheduled the special meeting at 7:00 a.m. on September 13th to vote on accepting it. The meeting will be, was held in the boardroom in Hamilton County. They voted on it, they accepted it, they appointed the assistant superintendent to be the new school board superintendent. But I want to share something with y'all, and this is courtesy of Michelle Fuller up in Hamilton County. She was hot, baby. She was hot under the collar, and she was sharing some things, so I want to share this with y'all.
I did not think that I would have to fight it again. I did not think I would have to fight this again. You were my grandchildren, my grandchildren.
This woman is serious right now.
This woman is qualified to do her job, and they forced her out. They forced her out. It's not right.
I want to start this one as well.
I live in Fishers, I'm a resident of Fishers. I have grandchildren, they don't go to this school, but I have grandchildren in the building state of Indiana, and see this happening, and see this happening all over the country, that they're trying to block our history, they're saying that diversity is wrong, that black history teaches hate. My cousin Abe Smith and his friend Thomas Schiff were lynched in 1930 in Marion, Indiana. I have history here. I have history here.
All I can say is this, this woman, she lives in Fishers, and Ms. Norma Johnson doesn't even have children in the school district, but she has been watching and paying attention to what has been going on in her school board. She understands the importance of making sure students have a well-rounded education, whether they're her children or not. But these Moms for Liberty people have decided that they didn't want a black woman, I said it, they didn't want a black woman managing their school board. Now, we are, sometimes don't want to, we don't want to call people racist, and I get that, because being called racist is pretty horrible, right? But we need to be more upset at racist behavior than we are being called a racist. And until we decide that we are not going to allow the things that happened to Dr. Yvonne, that happened to her, and that we are going to take our school boards back, there was a teacher that said they purposefully scheduled the meeting for 7:30 in the morning. How many people can take off work? In fact, one of the school board members couldn't even take off work, she had to come in via Zoom. So the whole point was to limit access, to limit our voice, to limit your voice in Fishers, and silence the people. Now, I know y'all saying, well, Dana, this might be just an isolated incident. It's not an isolated incident. We are seeing it all over the country, all over the country, where, you know, people who are running for the President of the United States said African-American history had no educational value. Say, what? There are people who are trying to dehumanize us again. There are people trying to erase our history again, and it's not in some far-off land like Tallahassee, Florida, it's in Fishers, Indiana, up the street and around the corner. In fact, I actually ran in that district in 2016. I knocked doors in Fishers. It's not that far away. And if we continue to let these clown-ass Moms for Liberty take hold of our communities and infect them with their racist virus, then we are all the fools. Our children are looking to us to stand up for them. Our young people are watching what we do and what we don't do, and when we don't stand up for what is right, why is the grandmother the loudest one at the meeting, y'all? There were only two people, because I watched the video, there were only two people that signed up to give comment. Now, again, they did do this at 7:30 in the morning, and I get it, not everybody can take off work, but the grandmother is calling it out, calling the racist, and to their faces. She wasn't afraid to say it to their faces. Some of us don't have what it takes to say what needs to be said to the people, in front of the people, to their faces. I'm not afraid, and the next time y'all need me up in Fishers, call me. I don't always get the news of what's happening in Fishers, but when I do get it, because what happens in Hamilton County can happen anywhere in Indiana, and the fact that there are black students in Hamilton Southeastern Schools, schools who feel like they are not safe and not heard is problematic, I can't really come up with the right words to say how these students feel utterly and completely dismissed. I don't understand why some humans feel like their humanity is more valuable than anybody else's humanity, and it angers me. It angers me that a loud minority of people are getting away with this narcissistic behavior that if I don't want my child to read a book, no child should read a book. Just a whole school board of Karens. Ain't y'all angry yet? I'm pissed off, because we can change this. Have, if you have not reached out to Dana Colbert up in Hamilton County, the Hamilton County Chair, Democratic Party Chair, to find out what you can do to help her and help the party elect these folks in Hamilton County, that's all you gotta do is just help. Showing up in November is the least that you can do. I don't do this show because, well, I do do this show because I like to talk, but I don't do this show just because I like to talk. I'm trying to inform you guys about what the hell is going on in Indiana, and if you think they're gonna just stop at black and brown people, you crazy. You crazy. You already know they coming for the Rainbow Warriors. LGBTQ plus folks are being attacked everywhere, and then what's next? Y'all, black parents, just like white parents, pay taxes. They contribute to this society. Stop this nonsense. Fight with me. Fight with me against this Moms for Liberty bullshit. I'm sick of these people, and I'm gonna be like Ms. Norma, and I'm gonna step to their faces, who's with me? I'm not saying you got to be violent, because we, violence never solves anything, but let them know you ain't afraid and you're not gonna back down. Let's go. Let's go. Where's the rallying cry? Let's go. That's my rant, because I'm pretty hot about it. I'm pretty hot. Plus, I've been watching Deion Sanders, his pre-game speeches. He got me wanting to suit up and play football at 53 years old, knowing I can't. And I'm gonna be Deion Sanders for our party. I'm gonna bring that energy that we need, because I need to fire y'all up. I need to get y'all hyped and ready to do the work of electing Democrats. All right, let me hear from my sponsor, Y. Take a break. Today's show is brought to you by Boeheim's Unique Boutique. Click on the QR code, and for all Turn Left listeners, you can get a 10% discount on your order by using the code DEMOCRAT. Be sure to visit www.bomshuniteboutique.com. All right, y'all, don't forget, we're getting close to deadlines, you need to get your digital content out. Hit me up at wwwblackpearl-its.com to make sure that you hit me up for your digital content, and if you need a public speaker, you know how to find me, indianazone.com. I'm always here to help you guys. My rates are always reasonable, but I just want to help you get elected, all right? Let's get to work. All right, let's talk to our guests. I'm a little fired up, y'all. Hope you're okay with that. First up, you know, sometimes you get lucky and you meet people, and they come into your life, and they help you out, and they don't even know they helping you out, right? I had to cancel on my first guest, because Ag Blue was sending me everywhere, and he was so gracious to reschedule. I'm staying in central Indiana today, y'all, central Indiana. Y'all give it up for my first guest, Will Jackson, running for Indianapolis City County Council, District 20. Will, welcome to the show.
Hey, thank you for having me, Dana. It is truly a pleasure and an honor to be here with Indiana's Own Dana Black, probably the most dedicated and progressive Democrat I've met in the state of Indiana, so I'm truly honored to be here as a guest of yours, to talk to you, to converse with you, to chop it up with you. Thank you for having me.
I love it. And to the warrior who is out here in Johnson County, again, last minute, y'all don't understand, these candidates are busy, and when they take time to talk to us, we gotta tip our hats to that. Y'all give it up for my second guest, running for Greenwood City Council at Large, Chari Stambach. Chari, Cherry, Cherry, like the fruit, right?
Like the fruit.
Like the fruit. Cherry, I want you to be like, I'm trying to do that French thing, Chari, you know. Cherry Stambach, Cherry, welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me, and thank you so much. You're an inspiration to so many people. You're a shero, you're a hero, you're amazing, so thank you.
I appreciate it. Guys, there's a lot going on. Normally, I stick with, especially with our municipal races, I stick with what's happening in the borders, but unfortunately, there's a lot of nonsense that's happening outside of our borders that are seeping in, like these Moms for Liberty clown women, and the impeachment of our President Joe Biden for, I don't know, helping Americans be better. As Democrats who are on the ballot and looking to serve your community, because all politics are local, talk to me how you feel about seeing the clown show that is. And y'all ain't gotta name no names, y'all ain't gotta go out there like that, but, I mean, because they say, the largest words on our Constitution are "we the people," and "we the damn people." So talk to me about how you feeling when you look at this current political climate, and we gonna chop it up. I'm gonna let the lady go first, is that all right, Will?
That's all right with me.
All right.
So in Greenwood, there are nine city council members. Six of them are specific to their district, three of them are at-large. So if you live in Greenwood proper, you can vote for your at-large person, regardless of where they live or where you live. Right now, all nine people are non-diverse, literally, all nine people are white. We do now have two women on the council, there was one that just joined in February, so now we have two. We haven't had a Democrat on the council in, at least since 2007. I'm still digging, trying to find out, when was the last time we had a Democrat on the council? But more importantly, every single time I go to one of these council meetings, every other week, I am the only person of color in that room. The only person of color, and not just in the board, you know, like, the nine people up there, not just the mayor and/or the chief of fire, the chief of police, literally, I'm the only person in the whole entire room, and sometimes there's 40, 50, 60 people there. And just to give you some insight, Greenwood is 20% non-white, non-Hispanic, 20%.
That's a lot.
One in five, yeah, and there is nobody representing us.
That's a great way to answer that question. Will, come on, bro, you in Indianapolis, bring it.
I mean, so, as you stated, it is disheartening when we see the current political climate going on in our country, especially with Moms for Liberty. We have to start calling Moms for Liberty who they really are, they are a domestic terrorist organization. The Southern Poverty Law Center has labeled them an extremist organization. So we gotta start calling them domestic terrorists. That's exactly what they are. They are out here in every urban area around America, targeting brown and black people. And it's detrimental to the African-American communities, the brown community, you call it the Rainbow Warrior community, and we have to stand up and call them out for who they really are. And we have to also call out those Republican candidates who have been endorsed by them, call out those Republican candidates who speak at their events, at their rallies, who makes, who's on calls with them. We have to call them out, because they are enemies of our people, they are enemies of democracy, and they are enemies of Indianapolis in the state of Indiana.
Oh, bro, you hit it, you hit it right on the head, ain't nothing else for me to say. If there was a mic that I wanted to get rid of, I'd drop it, but I like my mic, so I'm not dropping any of them. I'm not dropping not near one of them. All right, let's get into y'all, because you know what? I want to make sure the people know who you are, and guys, listen, if you are liking anything that these candidates are talking about, I have included their Ag Blue links, please donate to their campaigns. Bottom line is, $5, $10, $15, $20, anything and everything helps, they need yard signs, they need mailers, they may even need just water for their door knockers, okay? So just whatever you can give, donate to these candidates. All right, Cherry, tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Oh, well, I live here in Johnson County, in Greenwood. I've been here, I turned 40 this year, I moved here when I was 20, so about 20 years.
Girl, you about to make some folk mad telling them that you 40, because you know you looking about 22 over there. Go ahead.
I'll take it, but I'm actually very proud to be from, not from Greenwood, I actually was born in Manila, Philippines, moved here, my mother and I immigrated here when I was five, but I grew up in Wabash, Indiana.
Okay.
So it's really rural. I heard last week you had talked to someone from Huntington, Huntington's really close to Wabash.
Okay.
And just myself, I tripled the minority population with my own body by being there in Wabash, but that's where I grew up, but, and when I was 18, I moved down here to IUPY, to Indianapolis, to go to IUPY, and then.
What'd you study?
I studied in undergrad Biology and Psychology, and then in grad school, I studied Public Health, Epidemiology, and Behavioral Health Science, and then Business Management.
Ooh, so you're kind of smart, huh?
Oh, I used to be, I used to be, nonprofit management for quite some time, but now I'm just a photographer, so that's what most Greenwood people know me as, is the photographer. But when you look at my two decades of experience in nonprofit management, having worked at Planned Parenthood of Indiana, Girls Inc., National Resource Center, Wishard, which is now Eskenazi, the Health and Health Corporation, I mean, you name it, I've worked with so many nonprofits, that that experience and learning and understanding the process of budget development, creation, program implementation, and really oversight of those programs, they're like, oh, you're not just a photographer.
Right. And so, okay, when you, when you, you were studying biology, and then you went into public health, how did that, how did you transition into nonprofit? Because that's a little different. You could, you know, you could be working at a hospital, you could be working in the government, you know, because we actually need smart people in the government. What was the transition?
So actually, my freshman and sophomore years of undergrad, I started working with professors in both psych and sociology departments, and helping them do their federal grant reports, so I became really well-versed in like the OMB circulars of the federal government. And then, basically, by the time I turned 19, 20, I was, I had, I just knew grant writing really well, and being an English, as a second language person, I had to learn English super fast at like five years old in order to start with my class, so English kind of became like my shtick. I know English better probably than I do math, so I just, I know, I learned how to write federal grants and reports, so I stayed in that nonprofit world, instead of going to medical school, which was the original intention.
Okay, and then, being an immigrant in Indiana, how has it shaped your view on Indiana politics?
Okay, so, when I was in high school in Wabash, Indiana, I went to Southwood, which was even more rural of a, of a, of a school in the school district. At first, I think people treated me a little weirdly, I was 13, 14 years old, and they were like, are you in a, are you a foreign exchange student? Or are you our new, you know, teacher of some foreign language? Or, I, you know, I don't know if I can say this on air, but I got called chink and chit-chit-chong-chong, like, I just was made fun of so badly, until people got to know me, and it was just within months, you know, I was involved in speech and debate, and softball, and cheerleading, and they're like, oh, she's just like us, like, I deer hunted with my dad, and I rode four-wheelers with everybody, so they realized, you know, just because I look a little bit differently than, you know, them, that I'm still kind of cool, so.
Well, and that's, that's the thing, that's the importance of teaching, you know, different cultures and history in school versus, I don't want little Tommy to feel all insecure about what happened in history. If you teach people things, maybe they can learn some tolerance and acceptance and compassion, how about that? And then what was, what was it that made you decide, I gotta run for office?
Oh, my gosh, earlier this year, well, I've been passionate this whole time, even when I chose to leave the nonprofit world in 2018, I stayed involved and stayed up to date. I used to work for Mitch Daniels administration as the Women's Health Director for the state of Indiana, so, you know, knowing everything that happened at the state level, I knew I had to still stay involved. Earlier this year, Amanda Stevenson Holmes, who's our chair of the Johnson County Democrats, reached out and said, hey, you know, you seem like you might be a good fit, would you be interested in running for something? So I was like, sure, why not? It's a good time, my kids are getting older, I don't have to, you know, make them breakfast or really get them to school anymore, they just get themselves off to school, and I have time and availability. But more importantly, I'm pissed.
Okay.
I just got mad, I was like, once I started digging more deeply into the council, and seeing like how it's been since the 90s that we've had a Democrat as a mayor, or anybody on the council, it's like, what is going on? And so.
I love it. I mean, that's how, that's how I got here, I got pissed. Sometimes, sometimes you gotta get mad, I'm trying to get people fired up, too, so I love it. All right, Will, tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Hey, I'm Will Jackson, I come from the southeast side of Indianapolis. I'm a true Southsider.
I didn't even, bro, I ain't gonna lie to you, you the first brother I ever met from Indianapolis that said, I'm a true Southsider. I ain't gonna lie.
It's quite a few of us. So for the listeners, when someone over the age of 40 say they a Southsider, they're not referring to, you know, Greenwood or Southport, they're referring to Prospect and Raymond areas.
Gotcha.
Yes, for clarification for, for those listeners who might not be familiar with the old-school South side of Indianapolis.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm a true Southeast sider. I grew up just east of Fallon Square, attended Arsenal Technical High School. After high school, went to Simmons Bible College, studied Theological Studies. After school, I realized that there isn't any money in majoring in Theological Studies.
But it's not supposed to be, anyway.
It's not supposed to be.
Unless you Joel, whatever, Epstein, what was, not him, what's the other Joel? With the mega church that didn't let anybody in? Yeah, Olsteen, I said Epstein, oops. Wrong one.
Yeah, wrong one. So, you know, after college, I went and did a year, I said, at Americor Vista, working on a service learning project here in Indianapolis in the IPS high schools, where I learned a great deal about facilitation, trainings, holding workshops and things like that, and I really enjoyed that, with the training we received from the National School Reform Faculty out of Bloomington, Indiana, and that just, I said, man, I really love doing this work. Had my first child, I said, I need to get me a job, that work is not gonna pay the bills, so.
Them kids always want to eat, every day, don't they?
They always want to eat, and, and they don't have cheap requests like we did when we was growing up.
No. And their feet keep growing and all of that, they need, they need to get their cavities, they go to the dentist so they don't get cavity, all the things, all the things.
You know, when we was growing up, we could wear a pair of Buddies.
Man, they don't even.
They had shoes that cost $250.
They don't even know what Buddies are, bro. They not, they don't even know the song that went with it. You remember the song?
Oh, yeah, I do remember.
Buddies, they make your feet feel fine, buddies, they cost a dollar 99. Yeah, oh, see, I'm real, y'all know nothing about that, but go ahead, bro, you just, so you bringing back memories, man.
Oh, man, oh, man. So, you know, around 2006, I saw the condition of Indianapolis public schools, and I said, you know what, I want to run for school board to make a difference. I ran, didn't win, but the fire that served was still there. Growing up as a young person in my community there, like I said, in the Fallon Square area, we was part of the Fallon Square Youth Board, and it was focused on youth development and youth leadership. So serving our community from an early age, everyone that went through that program, which was pretty much the majority of young people in Fallon Square, we was blessed to have that skill set and receive those trainings from our director, Jim Mahalan, so that fire was in me. My father was focused on community, so at an early age, he made sure we had a love for community, a love for self, had a purpose. And my grandmother, my grandmother, Artricia, was the first African-American woman elected to the Indianapolis City County Council.
Come on now.
Back in 1972, so just being around that, just being, having that in my blood, part of my DNA, I've been a servant, I can't even remember from, probably from the womb.
I love it, I love that you call it a servant, because that's what we supposed to be doing, we supposed to be serving, I love that. Bro, but I gotta ask you, man, Republicans seem to have a moratorium on faith, and I'm hearing faith in you, I'm hearing that I got, I got a belief, what you say to those folks that act like Democrats don't believe?
Man, I will first say this, my Republican opponent, he attempted to pass a city ordinance a few years ago. he attempted to pass a city ordinance a few years ago that will fine, penalize, and criminalize faith groups and individuals from going downtown to feed and clothe the homeless. So that right there shows that Republicans don't have a moratorium on faith. That also shows that my Republican opponent never read the words of Jesus in Matthew the twenty-five, the twenty-fifth chapter. When he says, when I was hungry, you fed me. When I was thirsty, you gave me something to drink. When I was naked, you clothed me. So my opponent clearly, clearly does not have a love for God's people, children, by trying to pass a city ordinance that will harm our most vulnerable in our community. And not only that, not only that, if you go downtown to serve, the majority of people downtown that we serve in are black and brown people.
Come on.
So that city ordinance was a direct attack on minorities of black and brown people by my Republican opponent.
That's heavy. And you know, one of the things that I think people miss, and, and this is kind of cool that I have you two on together, because you're on the south side of Indianapolis and Cherry's in Greenwood, y'all basically encompassing the same general space. The south side of Indianapolis has been missing a lot of the real resources that the northern part of Indianapolis is getting, right? And because of the dividing line that everybody wants to stop in Marion County, they don't want none of that, they don't want people crossing over into Johnson County or the other places, the opportunities to do more, to do more things and, and be more mobile with public transportation is not there. Y'all, talk to me about the significance, if we want to continue to grow central Indiana, about creating real mass transit. If Indianapolis is close to nine hundred thousand people and you add in Johnson County and in Greenwood, that means we're close to a million with just that, right? What is the importance of, of addressing the, the mass transportation, public transportation needs of central Indiana? Cherry, you can go first.
Well, okay, so if you look at Indianapolis and, you know, our M S A and our contiguous counties, I mean, you all, you, you know, we've got Hamilton and Hendrickson in Boone and.
Hancock.
Hancock. And down here in Johnson County, basically, our public transportation system is, Indigo comes down just a couple of times in like a few spots, and it's both basically US thirty-one. I was, I was actually driving home from, I had to do some photo sessions up, up north in, in Westfield and in Noblesville today. And I came home and I started driving and it was just a stop basically along US thirty-one on the south side every single corner. And it just made me happy that we have that, but that's just about it. And it comes very few, far and few between. There's, I don't know the exact bus routes and times, but our, our stops are basically just a bench, if not even a bench, actually, the one at Walmart on Emerson and County Line is just, you just stand up there by the stop. There's no sidewalks to even get to it. I mean, you're not incentivized in any capacity to utilize the public transit system in Johnson County. In fact, I think the latest records show that out of the twenty-five thousand homes that we have in Johnson County, almost every home has an average of two point one vehicles. So like, we have vehicles, we have, you know, we just don't have a lot of people that use mass transit. But I remember you saying in a previous podcast, Dana, that we should charge like a penny tax, a penny every time somebody travels from Johnson County or one of the contiguous counties into Marion on our license plate. Man, when you said that, I was like, that's kind of brilliant.
Hey, I mean, it, listen, if, if you, especially if you're coming in to work, right? You know what I'm saying? Like, if you only come in to cross the border like once every, once a month, that's no big deal. But if you come in every day and then complain about the roads and bridges and streets and sidewalks in Indianapolis, and you're not contributing, you, you contribute to the downfall of it, but you're not contributing to the uplift of it, man, please. That's, that's what I say. Will, what you say about that public transit?
Well, I, I would say this. I would say over the last ten years, the city of Indianapolis has been aggressive in expanding and improving public transportation in Indianapolis. We had the addition of the red line, and now they have the construction of the, I believe, the purple and the blue lines coming also. So I really believe that the city of Indianapolis are positioning themselves to become a national model in public transportation. True is coming later than expected, but, but it's coming. So, so I would say that Indianapolis is on the right track. It covers the public transportation. I think we have to change the narrative around public transportation, though. Here in the Midwest, we're not even Midwest, here in Indianapolis, people think if you ride the bus, then you are without.
Yeah, yes.
However, when you go to Chicago or you go to New York, that is the means of transportation, no matter how much money you have in your pocket, whether a penny or a million dollars. So I think we gotta work on changing the narrative on it's okay to ride the bus. And I think if we begin to do that, it's gonna take a while, but if we begin to change the narrative, I think we will see the benefits of public transportation. We will have less pollution. We will have less road damage also.
Right.
But to piggyback on what Cherry said, when she spoke about the tax, that is very important. We have counties coming downtown to work every single day in Indianapolis that's damaged to our roads. It should be a tax on those individuals coming to our city each and every day to go to work.
I, I agree. And it's, it's not even, we're not asking for a, it's a penny. And all those pennies with all those cars will add up. I, I, I just think it would help us, especially since we, you know, it's like pulling teeth at the state house to address the, the road funding formula. So let's just, you know, let's just pass the, you know, let's work with it. Let's, and I think unfortunately it's got to come from the state, but yo, something's got to give. But then I also recognize the state house really don't want Indianapolis to be in power since we're a seventy percent Democratic city. They don't, you know, they doing everything they can to starve us. God, but something else. One of the things I've heard from every candidate, and I'm gonna ask y'all about it, everything that I've heard from every candidate who was running for municipal office this year is that there is a housing shortage. Talk about how we address the, the lack of affordable housing in your area. And then how should we address it overall from a, a larger statewide perspective? I'm gonna let Will start this time.
Uh, great question. We all know that Indianapolis is currently facing a housing crisis, like most major cities around the country right now. So we must find innovative ways to help alleviate the burden primarily on renters. Because right now, a renting cost for houses is through the roof and for apartments. And I believe we could do this with stronger tenant protection ordinances that the city council also could pass. Most importantly, we can also safeguard, put safeguards in place against rent rises and discriminatory practices. I believe another option that we can explore is to expand an inclusionary zoning process where we mandate that developers allocate a certain number of housing units for, as affordable in new developments. Or we could create a fund where they can pay into a fund to assist with affordable housing.
You know, and I, I wanna, I wanna hit, hit you right there because, you know, I want to make sure people understand affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean government assisted housing. Affordable housing means if I make forty thousand dollars a year, I should be able to afford a house. If I make a hundred thousand dollars a year, I should be able to afford a house. And so affordable housing is at different ranges, in my opinion. But anyway, Cherry, talk about affordable housing. Johnson County gotta be struggling too?
Well, okay, so here's the thing. We are a city that has an average income of about eighty-five thousand dollars.
Damn.
I know we have good income down here.
Because they working in Indianapolis. I'm just kidding.
I know. Yeah, I always do that with a lot of that. And I did that for almost twenty years. I lived in Greenwood, drove downtown, had an office right there on the circle. Like, yeah, I mean, I would have been paying this penny tax that we're discussing, but down here in Greenwood, we, we are experiencing the housing shortage. But what the problem is, is that the inflation costs of houses and the interest rates have created such an impact on people trying to buy houses. And so we have some new developers that are trying to come in. I, I've been watching, you know, obviously I keep going to the council meetings. And there's developers trying to propose that they're gonna rezone this land to multifamily housing, and they're gonna make it like super sexy, and they're gonna put in some restaurants and, and, you know, maybe axe throwing. There's all kinds of things.
Axe throwing.
Yeah, I don't know. And we're pretty popular in axe throwing down here. But we have so many new apartments that are really expensive for the average person. So our city is growing, like we have a four percent growth from just twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, okay? And then I'm just gonna take you way back to twenty years ago. We only had thirty thousand people.
Wow.
Now we have sixty-seven thousand people. That's how fast Greenwood is growing. So we're growing fast, but we have a lot of young people and, you know, the, the young urban was urban maybe, and they're moving in because they were supposed to be a place where they can afford. So I've been looking into, because you know, one of my pillars is affordable housing. Like, how can we get more affordable housing? Clearly, we can't incentivize a builder to give us cheaper housing options. We can't require any section type housing, you know, for off-market pricing. We can't require those things, but what we can do is maybe work with MYBOR, which is the Indiana Housing Association. We can encourage them to better, you know, educate new buyers, first-time home buyers, or people who maybe filed bankruptcy seven years ago and are ready to buy, four years ago and are ready to buy, how they can adequately use like FHA and HUD loans or first-time home buyer loans. Or first responders have opportunities for hero grants and stuff. So I just don't think there's a lot of talk about the options that we have to buy your first home down here. So.
I think that's good. I see, that's, that's good, because that's, that's one of those things. We have to look at all the different options, and there's no one fix. And the reason why I've asked those two probing questions, right? Those, those two very, what, what, what can you do about these things questions? Because the councils are the fiscal bodies of your local government. And it's important to understand what some of the needs are to adequately vote on proposals and, and understand those budgets. Will, I'm gonna start with you. Tell, tell us, give us an idea of how you understand managing big budgets.
Oh, well, before I became a candidate for city council, I was on the center township board for Marion County. So I managed a fourteen million dollar budget every year there for the center township trustee office and the center township small claims court. So managing budgets is something that I did for the past four years in that capacity. I'm also a business owner. I own a republic security. So I understand finances. I understand budgets. So that's something I've been doing for the past few years in that capacity on the center township board.
I like it. I like Cherry.
Budgets, I feel like I know really, really well. I said earlier that I know English better than that, but I will tell you, I do understand budgets really well. So when I started writing federal grants back when I was eighteen years old, you obviously, every time you submit a proposal, whether it's for one million or forty-eight million, you have to be able to develop a budget and a budget narrative that goes with it. So not only was I requesting those funds, but I actually helped develop under the maternal and child health division of the Indiana State Department of Health, we developed the RFPs that people could apply for. So I had to really understand not only my own budget, what the, the feds gave to us, but how to disseminate those funds. You know, I could go on and on. I, I think I was one of the most sought fundraisers back in the, probably early, like two thousand and tens through twenty eighteen. I've just, I've raised millions and millions of dollars of funds for the state of Indiana and disseminated and managed those funds. I traveled to DC and, and did all the places just to report on the funding that we had. So I think there's no doubt amongst the constituents down here who actually want to listen and care about maybe, you know, vetting their candidates. There's no doubt that I understand budgets, but it's more so that I'm gonna fight to get the right things in our budget. And if we don't, if we can't afford it, say, public safety, for example, like if they need more officers, if they need more equipment, or if we need more flop cameras. I mean, I'm just going on and on based on the twenty twenty-four proposed budget, then we need to find ways to get those funds. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I could just go on and on.
I love it. No, I love that, because honestly, it's the fiscal body. We can talk about a lot of different things, but if you don't understand a budget. So, but you did bring up something incredibly important, and you said, down here, having to talk to people who will listen. Both of you are running in very red districts. How are you communicating and knocking doors? And, and what has that experience been like for you as you're trying to convince a majority Republican voting bloc that you are the best option for their community? How are you crossing that aisle to bring them to you? Cherry, I'm gonna let, you brought it up, so I'm gonna start with you.
Oh, no. Okay, so I had an event last night at Oak and Barrel Brewing Company here on the south side. If you've not had Oak and Barrel beer, you should. It's really good. Drink responsibly, of course. However, okay, so at that event, there were some people already hanging out in the back brew house space, and one of them was a, a guy named Walter. Walter's like, hey, I'm a Trumper, but good luck. And I'm like, hey, why don't we talk? And so we had like twenty minutes of conversation, like sporadically throughout the night. By the end of the night, you know, maybe a little inebriated, he came over to my group of people and was like, she's pretty freaking awesome. Like, she actually knows her stuff, you know, like maybe she could have earned my vote. So I think that was in essence exactly what I experienced on a day-to-day basis ever since May, is they're like, I'm a Trumper, I'm a MAGA, I'm a da-da-da-da. Then they get to know me and they're like, well, her policies, her proposed policies and her proposed actions on her platform really just sound like common sense. I'm like, yeah, doesn't matter really, just, especially at the council level. It's not like I can vote on abortion control, ban and control. I can't vote on gun laws, really. I mean, there's some ordinances that we could put into place, but at the local level, it's what roads are gonna get constructed, what businesses are gonna get, you know, tax abatements, how many new, you know, just, there's so many other things that we can do, just are at the national level that divides the left to the right.
I love it. Will?
Uh, great question. It, it's been easy for me to connect with Republican voters in my district, primarily because my Republican opponent has been so absent from my district. Republicans, they're happiest to see a candidate knock on their door. They happy to answer that phone when, when I call, when I'm phone banking. Our district is primarily Republican. However, it's more of a purple district than it's a red district. So I'm confident November the seventh, we will get the victory. So while we out here canvassing and, and, and phone banking, when we encounter Republicans, they've been very respectful. They've been very nice. They've been very interested in the campaign. And like I said, the fact that my opponent has been absent from the district, the fact that my opponent has ran for another office every, every year since he's been a counselor for the past few years.
So he don't want the job? He don't want the job?
I guess he does not want the job. You know, so, so he, he has truly shown that he does not have a heart for District Twenty. So he has made it very easy for me to connect with Republicans in my district.
I love it. All right, let's talk about y'all's campaigns. Give me three of your top priorities, three of your, you know, just three, because I mean, I, I got a laundry list of things that I want to fix as a Democrat, but the three things that you're, you're hanging your hat on, on this particular campaign. Cherry?
Um, okay, so you've, I've heard it before, you've heard it before, transparency, but I mean it to the fullest effect. Like, I don't think a lot of people in Greenwood understand what it is the council does and how important their jobs are. So being transparent, but then also having that caveat in there with inclusivity and diversity. I'd like to see a human rights ordinance come in to play maybe even more. Just, we, we have Greenwood pride here in Greenwood, which is something new that we have, and it's really popular, but I want everyone to know that the LGBTQIA plus community is super welcomed here, you know, and so just more inclusivity, more diversity. I want that twenty percent population to know that we're, that they're accepted and they're welcome and, and they should be running for things and be involved as much as possible. The second thing you're gonna hear, even if you just Google Greenwood, public safety, it's a huge piece, a huge concern right now. The narrow primary that was in May earlier this year was kind of a rough and sometimes even dirty primary. The two Republican candidates were just bashing at each other, but mostly it was a divide regarding public safety. So some of our firefighters and some of our police officers don't feel well and well-supported, adequately funded. But here's the thing is, I've done some digging, of course, stats, being, you know, a public health professional, I did all kinds of digging. And the stats show that we are adequately funded and that we have adequate equipment and opportunities for purchasing some things, but if the perception is that these first responders don't have what they need, or if that the human resources department isn't listening to them and some of the other things, like it can be as simple, and I know this may sound silly, but as simple as being able to grow a beard while they're on duty, like that, that, they care about that. They want to be able to grow a beard. Like, so it's just learning, learning and understanding what we really need statistically versus what they feel we need, and then maybe educating both sides, you know.
I like it. I like, I never even thought about that. I'm literally going through my mind, like when I worked at the city county building, if any of the police officers had beards. I, I don't remember now. See?
Beard, tattoos, like, you know, just being a little more.
And, and being an individual and expressing yourself. Don't, I don't know anything about that. What's number, what's number three?
Number three, yeah, that's a tough one. I just, I think I'm gonna go ahead and pop in there, transportation and roadways slash infrastructure, right? So we just, we, we are always under construction here in Greenwood. And when I announced my candidacy in May, a woman reached out to me and said, Greenwood's roads suck. And I'm like, dude, okay, tell me more. Like, you can't just write that on my wall and not tell me. So we actually had a long conversation. She used to have a small business in our square of Old Town Greenwood, and they had done so much construction over time without really notifying, I guess, notifying the public of the businesses how to get to her business. She went out of business within like, I don't know, eighteen months of that period. And she just, and I said, hey, did you ever contact your council members, the nine? Because she said, you know, Democrats were the spawn of all evil and, and I'm like, but you're. And I'm like, but your nine, your nine, uh, council members were all Republicans. Did you reach out to them while you were suffering during that period? And she's like, oh, you know, she didn't, again, back to transparency. She didn't know that was an option, an opportunity to engage council members, so.
I like that because we need to educate our electorate too. A lot of times they don't even know, right? It's, it's up to us as leaders and, and if you're putting your name on a ballot, you a leader, okay? No matter when you did it, it's up to us to educate. So bravo to you for taking that opportunity to educate, because that's half the battle, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. All right, Will, what are your three, bro?
Hey, so, uh, the three of the main issues that I'm focusing on, um, based on just feedback from residents in my district and District 20. One of the main things that they're concerned with is public transportation, um, and the roads. One of the things we don't have out here is indigo routes. Indigo routes don't come all the way east, um, here in our district. So a lot of residents can now utilize indigo transportation, um, that live in the southeast area that lives in the rain in the park areas. So one of the things is, is look at expanding indigo routes, um, throughout the county, primarily in District 20. I would say the second one would be, um, gun violence. A lot of residents in my district, when I knock on doors, they are very concerned about gun violence. Some of them are scared to even come out their house after 5:00 PM each day. So when we look at gun violence, some of the things the city council can, can look at, um, if I get on the council, I can, um, help facilitate some of these, um, um, programs. I would say, um, a buyback programs, bring, bring it back to buyback programs that we used to have some years back. We work in conjunction with the sheriff's department, uh, encouraging responsible gun ownership and teaching about gun safety. Uh, gun safety is not talked about a lot. Last event I would say, I gave out over, uh, 200, um, gun locks and educated families on how to utilize and use, uh, gun locks properly, especially when you have small children in your home. And the third thing is one of the things that, um, that's really near and dear to me, um, when we talk about food insecurity. Here in District 20, we have the East Washington Street Business Corridor in my district. So all of those restaurant, fast food restaurants, um, down East Washington Street from Franklin all the way out to, what is that, uh, German church? It's here in District 20. Every single day when those restaurants close, they throw away tons of food. So one of the things we can look at is, um, food waste being a contributing factor, um, to hunger here in Indianapolis. And we can put an end to it through funding food recovery programs that could help provide meals daily for those in need instead of throwing that food away in waste.
I love it. I mean, my goodness, those are so specifically focused to the people in need. Oh my God, you're a servant. You said that, didn't you? Oh my, I mean, it's, it's, it's common sense to me. You know, I mean, and I, and they're gonna write it off anyway. Why not say, okay, this is what we have and we know the food isn't bad eating meat? Well, I don't know if those McDonald french fries are actually potatoes, so you might want to throw them out. You might want to throw them out. No, I'm just kidding. Cause you know, sometimes them burgers ain't real burgers. And I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying ain't real meat.
And don't forget, Oprah got sued for that, so be careful.
Sued for what?
When she talked about the beef and the, um, the farmers, the beef farmer sued her.
But she was talking about mad cow and who had the, yeah. She was like, don't eat the meat, cause the, well, she didn't say it like that. She was like talking about the cow's meat is poison. So you know, and, and you had to remember though, at that time Oprah said, you know, the sky is green. We'd have been like, look, it's green. Cause Oprah was the, ooh, Oprah, man, she, the book, anybody was on her book club? It was a rat. You was a millionaire after that. But y'all, y'all, these are, I love these very specific conversations that you were having with your people. I love the specific, um, items that you want to tackle. Now, say you win, you didn't have these conversations out here in the streets with your, your constituents. Now you in, in the chamber. Will, you're not gonna have this issue as much because we already have a super majority in, in the Indianapolis City County Council. But, but Cherry, whoo, how are you going to work across the aisle to get things done? Talk about it.
Well, in the sandbox and everybody knows it. I mean, even when I was in the nonprofit management world, there were, um, some people who had different ideas about what implementation program could be best. Hey, one thing to kind of answer that and piggyback off of, uh, well, here. I worked at Second Helpings Inc. on southeastern, near the east side. Um, and they do do so much with transforming lives through the power of food. And one of those things is connecting businesses with nonprofits that could use that food at the end of the night. So if you don't yet, I'll, I'll, I'll email you that information.
I love the networking, baby, network.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think, uh, so, huh, uh, the majority of the, the people that are on the council right now, they don't really know who I am. I come to the meetings and they're like, who's that girl? I think just like, just letting them know that I really care. I'm not a jerk. I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna listen, you know? I, I know we're in Indiana and then I have a lot of progressive things that if I were running for something more at the state level, oh my God, they probably wouldn't like me because I could affect change in more democratically at the county or at the council level of the city. I mean, I'm just gonna work with them and, and fiscally, I think we all really want the same thing. We want good roads. We want our first responders to be protected and taken care of. We want everybody to be happy with their homes, that they're affordable and that they're quality. They're not, you know, you don't want to build affordable housing for it to be shabby. You know, we want walkable areas. We want sustainability. So I think we all want the same thing and, and I think they'll learn that they can rely on me as the stats person. I'm not ever gonna ever say anything unless it's backed up with stats. And so I think Republicans, if, if they may remain the majority, which they will, because there's not enough Democrats running.
We'll fix that next time.
Yeah, I know, we're getting there. Um, they're gonna, I think they'll start to trust me. In fact, I think they're, they're watching me on social media. I have videos upon videos trying to educate everybody on, this is what the council does, this is, you know, just because there are three names on the ballot for at large, doesn't mean that you have to vote for three people. If I'm the only person you like, just vote for me.
Go ahead, tell them the truth, girl.
Just educating everybody. A lot of those videos, man, social media is key.
It is, and it's a, and it's an inexpensive way to level the playing field. I mean, literally, I tell people all the time, when I ran in 2016, nobody knew my name. I didn't have any legacy. I'm not a legacy kid. I didn't have anybody that was in politics. And now people in 92 counties know who I am because I utilize this free tool. You know what I'm saying? It's a free tool.
But you're pretty awesome too, though.
I'm just a chick with a big mouth, man. That's it. Will, how you gonna, how you gonna work across the aisle to get things done?
Um, I think, a- as you mentioned, super majority on the council. So I think my biggest issue would not be reaching across the aisle. But however, having those horror conversations in the Democratic caucus. Often times when you have a super majority, you can become complacent. And, and not really fight for the least of these in our community. You can just go along with the status quo because, hey, who's gonna be mad at me? It's 20 out of 25 seats. So I think my horror conversations may be in that Democratic caucus meetings. Making sure that resources flow from the 24th floor all the way down to the ghettos of Indianapolis. And not just stay downtown, but downtown's economic development, but development in South Irvington, development of 42nd and Post, development at Hallville. So we gotta make sure these communities throughout Indianapolis is getting their just due, um, of resources from the city, city council and the mayor's office. So those conversations, um, making sure that the most vulnerable of our community are not being neglected, are not being forgotten. Founding, finding more ways, like they had the pilot program of opening the, the former IPS school on 21st Emerson to house the homeless during the winter last winter. Finding the funds to expand those programs where they can be housed throughout the whole entire year. So I think that, uh, I think for me versus reaching across the aisle is gonna be convincing my fellow Democrats that we have a mantle to uphold, to take, to care for the least of these in our community and we gotta fight for it.
You know, you are so right and, uh, my girlfriend, she gets on me all the time because she's like, quick, quicken on my city. But I, I've, I've watched Bloomington City County councils and there's nine Democrats. So what you have in Greenwood is the, the exact opposite in Monroe County. And it is, in my opinion, I, I, I think all, all nine of any one thing is bad.
Yes.
It's, it's bad. You need to have diversity of thoughts. You need to have the diversity of ideas. You need to have diversity of, of lived experiences. And when you got, you know, nine people who supposed to be on the same side, but are literally arguing with each other for five or six hours. I, I, I used to ask Nicole all the time, what the hell are they arguing about? They on the same thing. What are they arguing about? You know, they just want to hear themselves talk. But I, I do, I do have to ask this other question because you know what? It, it just, you know, between Fonny Lewis and all, I mean, Fonny Willis and all of the black women who are doing amazing things, they are demonstrating that women of color and humans of color in this great nation have an opportunity to contribute and be, have positive impact on the direction of our society. What does it mean for you, Cherry and Will, to be a part of, well, the AAPI, the AAPI community is a little different and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I hate, you know what I hate? I hate when they call y'all the mo- model minority. I don't know how y'all feel about it. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but I hate it because it's like, wait, what? What do you, what do you mean? So you, but, but, but we are not present in the places that we need to be. We're not wholly represented by our populations. Talk about as people, proud people, as a proud woman of Filipino descent and a proud black man from the south side of Indianapolis. What does it mean to bring your lived experiences in your body to your community and to your city council? I'm gonna let y'all go.
I'm gonna go ahead and talk here for a second. Um, so I am half Filipino, but I'm half Iranian as well. So that, um, that other half of me, I know it's a weird mix, but it happens. I came out and it, it worked out. But I also, like I said, I grew up out in the country. Like I can, uh, you know, I know some Democrats don't like to hear this, but I can, I'm a dead shot at the rifle because I grew up out in the country. I do know how to, you know, live off of land, I guess. I don't know.
Come save me if the apocalypse come, because I don't know.
I got you. Um, but what I'm saying is like, I have, I chameleonized. I learned how to become whomever I was hanging out with. And, and it's a weird, that's a good thing and it's kind of a bad thing because I kind of lost myself too. Being a Filipino who can't speak Tagalog very well, I felt alienated among my mom's Filipino friends. Okay. And then obviously being half Iranian, oh my gosh, I don't even know anything about Middle Eastern culture because I wasn't raised by my biological father. So I just, I'm on no man's land. It's hard because when I get treated differently by people, let me tell you one, this was not too long ago. It also happened once when I was really young, checking out groceries. The, the checkout person was like, do you want paper or plastic? Assuming that I didn't speak English. And I'm just like, huh? I just kind of looked at her like I was stupid just because I, I don't know, I'm gonna go ahead and I just didn't, I was angry. And I knew if I was, um, too nice, I probably would have been, I just couldn't educate her in that moment. But like, that's.
It wasn't your responsibility to educate her either, but you couldn't.
I know. I mean, and I've had all the experiences of, of racism that, um, I experienced it from the, not just from white people, but I experienced it from. My own culture, like, you know, you don't speak Tagalog, but I don't know, I just want women in general. And, you know, I am a part of the LGBTQIA plus community and I want bisexual, transgender, um, gay people. I want you, I want all of us to be involved in politics or at least serving, being a servant of God, being a servant to your community. Like there's no reason why you aren't out there at least giving, doing one community service, a, a quarter.
That's it. That's all it takes. I love it. And I'm trust, know and believe, I'm about, I'm about to hit you up about Stonewall. Don't, don't worry. I'm about to hit you up. Don't worry. And, ooh, I got, ooh, I got a couple of things. Okay. Cause, cause I need more, I need more rainbow warriors. That's it. So when the campaign is over, trust, know and believe, you are not done. Will, what does it, what does it mean to be a black man?
Man, so, um, I often tell white Democrats that they choose to do politics. But being black in America, we have no choice. Because our very existence is political in nature. So as a black man in, in America, in Indiana, in Indianapolis, every morning when I open my eyes, that's a political act. When I walk out my house, that's a political act. When I get behind the steering wheel and drive while black, that's a political act. So my very existence depends on politics. Where white Democrats can just choose to do politics if they choose to, right? And, and it often reminds me of what they say about diversity is inviting someone to dinner. But inclusion is, is, is inviting them to a seat at the table at the dinner. But I believe in equity. And I believe in equity means that I was a co-owner of that table and I was a co-collaborator and planning that dinner and that menu.
That's it.
So I think we need to stop talking about diversity and inclusion so much and begin to push for equity. Push for ownership, push for co-collaboration in political spaces with people of color. Because for too many years, black women and brown women have been the bedrock and the backbone of the Democrat party in Marion County and throughout the country. Joe Biden became president because of black women votes.
Say it again.
So we cannot u- use women to volunteer, to vote, to cook dinners, to serve men. And then turn around and subjugate them to an inferior role.
That's it.
That's unacceptable in our society. We gotta begin to speak out against that.
I love it. Well, you know what? You ain't ever got to worry about somebody subjugating me because it ain't finna happen. They gonna be like, well, you, okay, just, you know what? Just make her the CEO so she shut the hell up. That'll be me.
We have so much in common. We have so.
Oh my God. Indiana's on Dana Black, talking to, uh, Will Jackson, who's a candidate of City County Council, Indianapolis City County Council, District 20, and Cherry Stanball, who is running for Greenwood City County, City Council at large. Y'all, this has been a great conversation. It was energetic and intelligent. I would like to thank you for that. Now tell the people, Cherry, tell the people where they can find you.
Uh, go to cherryforgreenwood.com. Cherry is C-H-A-R-R-I-E.
And spell it better than I did. Yep.
It's Cherry Stanball, uh, Cherry for Greenwood, super easy. You can literally find me on TikTok, Twitter was Twitter, now it's something else. I don't know, Instagram, Facebook, X, that's it. You can find me on just about everything, even YouTube. I've got a channel where I'm talking all things politics and I. You inspire me because.
Love it. I'm gonna start like liking your stuff. I didn't know you had a YouTube page. I didn't know you were a content creator. We should, we should talk.
I'm old though, so my kids are constantly teaching me like how to do TikTok stuff.
Cherry, Cherry, I'm, I'm 53. I got you by 13 years.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, we're old souls. Let's talk. I mean, I, I feel like there's some collaborations, collaborating that needs to be happening. All right, Will, tell the people where they can find, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Do you have any events coming up, Cherry?
Um, so the next one is at Smock Town Brewery on September 28th in the evening. We're gonna have live music. It's only $20. It's a $20 donation and it's not just for me. It's for the other at-large candidate that's also running, who's a Democrat. Her name is Rachel Matthews, super awesome lady to look up as well. So yeah, that's my next big one.
I love it. All right, Will, tell the people where they can find you.
You can find me at the website, www.williamjackson.in and you can find me on X, formerly Twitter, at Vote Will Jackson.
I love it. I love it. Okay. Uh, do you have anything coming up, Will?
The next big event, um, that I want everyone to come to, um, it's October the 27th. That's a Friday, October the 27th, from 8:00 PM to midnight. I am turning Washington Square Mall into an indoor skating rink. And that would be my last fundraiser before the general election.
I love it. I love it. I won't be there because I, I need my hips. Cause I'll fall, but that sounds like a great idea. And guys, uh, there will not be a turn left next week. I am going to the Congressional Black Caucus. Listen, I, I'm a junkie. Y'all know who I am. I'm going to the Congressional Black Caucus. I'm excited. I'm gonna actually, for the first time, visit my congressman in DC. I am so Congressman Carson, I'm, I let him know I was coming. I'm excited. Will, you gonna be there with me, ain't you?
I would definitely be there next week. Um, I'm gonna be at the conference. Also, the collective pack, um, they endorse my campaign.
Oh, nice.
They have a special event, um, doing those festivities. So I will be there next weekend.
Well, make sure you let me know when it is. I'm actually, um, staffing my CEO at, over at Act Blue. So I'm, I'm kind of at somebody else's disposal, but I mean, she may not want to hang out as late as me, so you never know. You never know. Guys, I love that your passion. I love your desire to serve. Thank you for putting your names on the ballot and wanting to serve your community because more than anything else, we need more diversity, more voices, because we gotta stop this clown show, bro. I mean, ooh, I'm so hot that they had this grandmother up there in their faces. She got in their faces. Why? Where, where, okay, let it go, Dana. Let it go, because I wasn't there, so I need to be quiet. Y'all, Indiana's on Dana Black Turn Left. This is what we do. So no, we won't have a show next week. And guys, I gotta tell you, a couple of my shows are gonna be pre-recorded. And I remember I asked you last, last week, think about what a good night would be. I'm thinking about Tuesday night. I'm thinking about Tuesday night because most conferences that Act Blue sends me to are Wednesday through Saturday, or Wednesday through Sunday. And so Thursdays, I don't want to keep canceling on my guests. I respect them too much and I respect their time too much. I don't want to keep canceling on them, but, um, I'm not gonna turn down opportunities that Act Blue are giving me either. Cause that one actually pays the mortgage and make sure the lights are on and the internet so we can do the show. So, um, think about that. Let me know. Hit me up in my box. But more importantly, uh, we got. But more importantly, uh, we got, we're like, what is it, three and a half weeks away from voter registration deadline? It is, if I'm not mistaken, it's October 9th. Am I right, guys? Or October 7th?
I thought it was 10th.
October, okay, October 10th. We're getting.
Cause early voting begins on the 11th.
Okay, there we go. Early voting begins. So listen, that's not that far away. It really is not. Well, it'll be here in a minute. I mean, I remember when I was getting ready to go to Minneapolis in May. And here it is, September. So remember, check your voter registration. Don't play, just check it. Go check it. Voter, what is it? Voter.org, something like that? But if you're not sure, hit me up. Dana, what is that voter location? Check your voters, yeah, check your voter registration, because you don't want to be left out in 2023. Because this is how we build our bench. This is how we build our bench for the next leaders in the state house. And the next leader's going to Washington, okay? We gotta take care of these municipal races. We do really well in our cities and towns. I just need you guys to show up and show them that the values that we speak are real Hoosier values, and we want to help everybody. All right, enjoy the next week off without me yelling in your ear, and I'll holler at y'all next time. Peace.